The published storm event for a hundred year storm for Barrington is 6.35 inches of rain. But since the AOT requirement has changed to use extreme precipitation, we automatically for our 50-year storm use a 6.98 inches of rain for the site. So what we've modeled as a 50-year storm under the AOT standards of extreme precipitation is a greater rainfall than the 100-year storm that's published by NCRS. So I think we're covering the traditional 100-year storm that is happening more frequently is covered by the fact State of New Hampshire AOT has bumped up all of the reviews to the extreme precipitation table. So we have a pretty dramatic 50-year storm and our model works for that. It meets the requirements for the 50-year storm, meets the requirements for AOT. So I think that we've got that as covered as we can. I think those were the two main comments that they brought up. I think we've added the rest of them.
A couple of issues. Marshall, one of these is kind of you. But it seemed like there were a couple of things that were still outstanding. One was the need to approve the turning radius plan by the fire chief.
I spoke with Rick Walker today. He said the turning radius is fine.
Okay. And the other thing was you still had it in the draft notice of decision. All concerns from DuBois and King review must be satisfactorily addressed. I read DuBois and King, the response, DuBois and King's second letter and the response to second letter. Are there any outstanding issues with DuBois and King?
That is why I left it in there. I want to make sure and we can leave that as part of the draft notice of decision because they'll have to satisfy whatever DuBois and King had if there's any remaining questions. In other words, you could approve it with that left in there and then DuBois and King has to sign off on it that they did.
So the plans that you have does address their comments. Whether they've reviewed it or not and signed off, I don't know. But they were pretty reimentary comments and I think we've got them covered, but we can certainly leave it as a condition of approval. As it's reflected in your plan set.
I agree. I agree. Just because I like to have that final sign off. I know one of the prior projects we had, they did it and they say they have no further concerns and that's why I left it in there. It should not hold up any kind of approval because the plan won't get signed until DuBois and King signs off on it.
So DuBois and King gave comments. They've responded. DuBois and King reviewed the responses in the plans. They had like a handful of additional comments. Basically said, well, we didn't feel like you addressed these comments from before. They now responded that. So you're saying what we're waiting on is just DuBois and King to say, yep, we're done.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
The one other, the one comment or question, I guess I want to make sure the board is clear on is, you know, the original intended use of the property was for storage of, you know, high-end recreational type aspects. And now it seemed to morph into a much larger use based on parking size. So I just want to make sure that any use other than, I mean, if something goes in there, some other business goes in there, there needs to be some sort of note, right? As far as limitations to the use. Because, you know, it could, we got repair service. I don't think it was why I feel comfortable with an auto repair service going in there and not having some sort of, you know, dumpsters and ways to contain oil and things of that. So I'm a little leery of the broad spectrum of uses. Does anybody else share that feeling with me?
Yeah, I do. But I saw that there was an email chain that talked about what the, based on parking requirements, based on what we had said about doing. It was being proposed that they, it would be limited to the, there would be a list of uses limited to office, repair service, storage facility, light industry and warehouse.
Right. Right. So this is turning, right, it's turning into an industrial park as opposed to, you know, a storage facility. I mean, if somebody wants to go in there and do a beer distillery, there's nothing that says they can't do a beer distillery. And there's no methods in place to, for, you know, trash disposal, you know, retail store. I'm just, it became very broad very quick in my opinion. And I don't know if it's a bad thing, but I just want to make sure it's addressed.
I agree with Jamie. I actually agree with Jamie, especially the repair services and light industry caught my attention. Especially knowing that that was the original guise in which I believe my employer came in under.
So would you be comfortable? See, we've done these before where the applicant was allowed to list some industries that would fit in with the zoning and the parking requirements. Anything that would go in there would need to meet the parking requirements or the facility that's constructed. If the board's comfortable removing some of those, that's fine. That wasn't their intention to come in with those. They'd have to come back for another, a change of use.
And that, I definitely feel more, you know, I'm looking, I'm thinking back to the Stone guy and we wouldn't let him put stuff in there because there's certain, if you're talking about warehousing, there's certain limitations on stacking and you can't go above certain feet with stacking and there's fire stuff, you know? So if you start warehousing fireworks in one of those units, there's some concerns that need to be addressed as opposed to putting in a boat or an RV. So I don't.
I agree, Jamie. The only thing we have to be careful of is there are items that the fire chief and the co-enforcement officer would be required to enforce. And if there was some kind of change in use like that, that's the only thing to remember. It's not a planning board decision in that respect, if it's another code.
Right. But if we approve this as written and Mr. Estes decides to rent out to a fireworks distributor, there would be, there would be no trigger for them to come do anything. It's permitted at that point, correct?
Depending on whether the requirements they have to fulfill within, you know, fire and codes. I mean, I don't know what the requirements are for that. They still have to fulfill those requirements. But like I said, if you're more comfortable with some of the, you know, more benign items, I don't think that would be a problem. You can ask Mr. Stoll, you know, here.
I would agree with, Jamie, I agree with you on this. There's, it's just way too broad and it quickly expanded beyond what it was billed to as compared to our zoning.
And I would agree with all of that also. I'm concerned about, those are very broad, repair service. That could be a garage. You know, light industry. I mean, that's, that's quite, well, Andy, isn't TurboCam light industry?
Yes, it is.
So I guess I feel comfortable and it will bounce off the board. I feel comfortable office and storage facility, I think. And then a note that any other, any other business would require, I mean, it requires full site review for any other business to go into one of those units. Does that make sense?
Okay. The warehousing, do you think, because it's, you know, large warehousing or it's similar to storage?
I think warehousing is very broad. I don't know.
Well, if I.
I don't understand the term off the top of my head.
If I remember the discussion, but they also talked about you could have, let's say, an electrician. They typically have a vehicle and that's where a van and they have all their supplies and they could park their vehicle in there. They could store, you know, materials they use and have an office there, which I thought that was previously discussed and I didn't object to that and I didn't hear anyone else object either.
Right. I think a contractor suite, if you want to describe it as such, but I think that falls into office to me. But a contractor suite makes sense. Storage certainly and, you know, some type of office building, but, you know.
What do you call, what do you plan to do with maybe storing a number of vehicles in there? Would you consider that storage or would you consider that warehousing? Say somebody comes in and they store, I don't know what the capacity is of that, but probably you could, maybe you could fit 10 cars, 20 cars? I don't know, based on the size.
Personally, you're not getting 10 cars in there based on the size of these units.
Right. But I think based on, I think whether it's a private endeavor, it's storage. If I, if someone chooses to rent one of these units or buy and put 10 of their collectible cars in there, that's storage. And if he's warehousing cars as a business for someone else, it's a different business. You know, I think it triggers site review and hours of operation and all that stuff. I think that needs more, more looking at.
Well, vehicle storage though is much different than vehicle repair.
Right, correct.
I mean, as I would envision this, it would be limited to office areas, watercraft storage and vehicle storage.
That was the main focus of the project as we started. The conversations morphed into the contractor suite that certainly is in high demand and is handy, that doesn't generate a lot of traffic, provide somebody that little office cubicle. It was never intended to be an office suite. It was always an office component to, if there was somebody like that that wanted to run the small business out of there. But the parking requirements would prohibit from, like a doctor's office, dentist's office. We couldn't put an engineer in there. There's not enough parking to support anything like that. It was always intended to be an office component to the plumber, the electrician, the overhead garage door guy. That's what the focus was when, as we expanded from just plain RV storage. Just because the unit size seems to make sense and there's a demand for that and why have them sit empty if there's not enough RVs? That was as far as it went. And then it turned into, well, where's the line? And I know Alan and his attorney had that discussion and threw some ideas out there, but I don't think the intent was to blow us up into an industrial park. That's certainly not where we were headed.
So would you feel comfortable if we remove repair service, light industry and warehousing from the list?
Al's on the line as well. He can jump in.
You'll have to unmute Al.
Can you hear me now, Jamie?
Yes, welcome.
I'm comfortable with that. What we intentionally went after was, like Bob said, RV storage, watercraft storage, maybe a small office for an electrician, like Jeff said, might go there. Because you can't keep your truck in the yard wherever he's living. That's the market that we're going after. We're not going after manufacturing or anything like that. When Jim Schulte looked at it, he looked at it with the sense of parking spaces. That's all he was looking at, make sure that he didn't go into anything that required more parking than the two spaces or three spaces we have for each unit.
So if we, if we modified the list to say office, storage facility, watercraft, storage and vehicle storage, then that would seem to cover all of the intended uses that we've been discussing. They have the office, they can store their vehicles. We say that it could be used for storage. So, you know, if an electrician, he's probably going to have some cabinets that has, you know, welding flux in these or for sweating, sweating in the joints. He's going to have a small amount of pipe. An electrician might have switches and conduit. But those would fall within storage facility. So that, that sounds like it would, it would cover all the intended uses we've been talking about.
All right. Just let me, because we have a definition for repair services in the zoning ordinance and I think we ought to be consistent with that. Repair and servicing of appliances, computers, electronic equipment, tools and other small machinery common to homes and businesses. That's the definition for repair services in the zoning ordinance.
And I'm personally comfortable allowing that. If we stick to that strict definition, I'm comfortable with that. I don't.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Marcia, for reminding us. I'd forgotten that definition.
I used to say the repair was automotive repair and that's not the intent. The only, the only thing that Alan said about automotive repair is if, is if I do have my classic cars in there, but I can go in and tinker with them, my personal property, not for hire.
Yeah, very good. Does the board have any other comments before I open up public comment?
So how would we do that? Would we put that on the notice of decision?
We can and we can also list it, they can list them right on the plan itself. And the only two now that I feel you've said is you said repair service, storage facility. You said next to the light industry and warehousing, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So it's just those two. Oh, office. What about the office?
Allowing office.
Okay. They'd have to meet the parking requirements anyway.
Right.
Okay. So office, repair service and storage, storage facility are all okay. All right.
Are those already noted on the plan somewhere or is that in a separate document as far as when I adding the note to the conditions precedent?
Well, why don't we just add it to the plan as part of the notice of decision?
Correct.
That's fine with us. It's not on the plan, but we can certainly add it.
Can we also just make sure that repair service is clearly defined? Just because definitions change as time goes on. So if the zoning update, it doesn't alter what this was coming in.
I can't go by the zoning ordinance is written. I can't, I can't change the zoning ordinance.
I'm not asking to change the zoning.
I think it's pretty clear that it means.
What you could do though is cite that the repair service and per whatever the, you know, zoning regulations effective this date.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jack.
That ties it to whatever the revision is that we're using, the definition we're using.
Okay. So the March 10th, 2020.
Okay.
All right. Donna, do you have anything to add?
Sorry, the mute's been giving me all the time. Nope, it sounds like it's taking that broad definition smaller is what is going to be working for us.
All right. The board doesn't have any other questions? I'll open public comment. If there's anyone out there that would like to ask a question, feel free to speak up. I will look at the conversation, see if I can notice anybody with hands waved. I don't, sometimes I'm not. Andy has to help me with that one.
I see no one waving and we've given it a minute.
I see no waving.
All right. We'll close public comment at this time. Does the board have any other questions or comments they'd like to add? Hearing none, I will read the draft notice of decision. Dear applicant, this is to inform you that the Barrington Planning Board has conditionally approved your application referenced above. All the precedent conditions below must be met by the applicant at the expense of the applicant prior to the plans being certified by the planning board. Certification of the plans is required prior to commencement of any site work or recording of any plans. Once these precedent conditions are met and the plans are certified, the approval is considered final. Please note, if all of the precedent conditions are not met within six calendar months of the day, the board's approval will be considered have lapsed unless a mutually agreed extension has been granted by the board. Conditions precedent. Add the following plan notes. Lot line adjustment for 220-54-7-1 and 54-7-2 was approved on 12/3/2019. Conditional use permit was approved on 12/3/19. 9.6 special permit for construction in a wetland buffer was approved on July 7, 2020.
So here for a D, shouldn't we add the, what the uses, approved uses are? Add note?
Letter D, add note to allowed uses on the plan to include office, repair service, noting the current zoning definition of repair service, storage facility. And that's, that would be, that's it. Add the New Hampshire DES alteration of terrain permit number. Add the New Hampshire DES subsurface bureau CA number. Add the New Hampshire DES water supply approval number. Sistern location to be approved and installed and operational prior to any construction permits being issued. Fire chief must approve turning radius plan. Applicants, engineers shall certify that the drainage was constructed as approved. All concerns from DuBois and King review must be satisfactorily addressed. Provide condominium documents incorporating stormwater maintenance plan, including responsible parties. Any outstanding fee shall be paid to the town. Prior to obtaining board signature, the applicant shall submit three complete paper print plan sets and supporting documents as required in Article 3 with a letter explaining how the applicant addressed the conditions of approval. This shall include final and complete reports for all items submitted during view for the town of Barrington's file. The chairman shall endorse three copies of the approved plans, meeting the conditions of approval. The town shall retain a signed and approved reproducible 11 by 17 in PDF format with supporting documents for town records. Where no active and substantial work required under this approval has commenced upon the site within two years from the day the plan is signed, this approval shall expire. An extension not to exceed one year may be granted by majority vote of the board so long as it is applied for at least 30 days prior to the expiration date. The board may grant only one such extension for any proposed site plan. All other plans must be submitted to the board for review to ensure compliance with these and other town ordinances. Active and substantial work is defined in this section as being the expenditure of at least 25% of the infrastructure improvements required under this approval. Infrastructure shall mean, in this instance, the construction of roads, storm drains and improvements indicated on the site plan. RSA 67439. Looking for a motion. Anybody?
Yeah, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the application 220-54.7.1 and 54.7.2. That's it.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Jeff Fran, seconded by Andy Knapp. Donna Masucci.
Masucci, aye.
Emerson, aye. Knapp?
Aye.
Fran?
Aye.
Congratulations and good luck, Al. Thank you both.
Thank you all much. Thank you all.
Have a great night. All right. Next up, we have James Morrison, Rebecca Andrews, Liza J. LaBelle and Nicholas Donovan. Request by applicant for a lot line adjustment with waivers between lot 11 and lot 13. And we have Joel here tonight.
Well, this is Joel Reynolds from Norway Plains. I'm here to represent my clients on this lot line adjustment. We were contingent from last month. We were trying to compromise on doing the remain survey for the lot 11. So we went out and located the buildings, the driveways, ponds out there. And we got the information from the client for the wetlands application that they had prepared before. We submitted those items. So I think what we're waiting for, our discussion about is asking for the waiver for surveying of lot 11.
All right. Does the board have questions? First, we need to, we need to accept the application if we're ready. If we have questions about the application, if we could ask those currently.
I've got a question. I, I don't know, but in my package, I've still got the original package. But were there additional materials? Because he's talking about showing, you know, the buildings on lot 11, which is something we requested along with wetlands delineation. I don't have those plans and what I'm seeing on the screen doesn't.
Jeff, we weren't going to do a wetland delineation. The documentation, they had previously done wetlands and the wetland permit into the state and we were going to get that paperwork for that, the new of doing delineation.
Hey, guys. But I'm saying those materials we talked about getting, you know, you said you were going to add the buildings and then you were going to get the documentation. That was a compromise. And I haven't seen any of that.
Yeah, I'm not sure why. It was given in the plan for last week.
Hey, Jamie? Jamie?
Yes, sorry, trying to unmute. Yep.
I have to drop off. I have a problem at work, so I have to drop off the call.
Okay. That is gonna take away our quorum. Sorry to hear that, Andy. Good luck. Wish you best of luck.
Thank you.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
Joel, I apologize to you.
Jamie, do you, did you get those materials? I, that wasn't in my.
I have a pile of stuff here, but I'm not sure what you're looking for specifically.
The materials provided aren't specifically showing wetland buffers. They were part of an application to do maintenance on a pond. So I don't think, if you looked at them, you wouldn't look at them as being able to designate where a wetland buffer is. So that may be part of the confusion. But since Andy left, I think the appropriate thing to do would be to adjourn the meeting because you should not have any further discussions without a quorum. But I would be, you know, happy to talk to Joel outside the, outside the meeting at some point. But we can't, we can't continue without a quorum.
Yeah, just, I agree. Just a question. So is there an updated plan that shows the structures?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So I just don't.
So Paul is going to have to be continued to the 18th as well, correct?
Yep.
Everybody will have to be continued to the 18th to no longer have a quorum.
Can we get, can we get Jeff? I mean, what's his, sorry, Ron?
Is he available?
If everybody, we'll just try to hang on for a second. We're going to try to reach out and see if we can get somebody to join in here so they have a quorum.
Jamie?
Yes, Donna?
My battery's showing red on my iPhone. I don't have electricity, so I don't know how much longer I'm going to be able to hang in there.
All right. Thank you for letting me know. We'll see what we can get through if we, if we can get Ron on the phone or not. Maybe get through one more thing, but. I know the power was flickering here for a minute. I don't know if we're on generator power or.
Yeah, my power was flicking, flicking. Yeah, my power, my power was flicking, flicking finally about 20 minutes ago. It went off completely and then it came back on. I'm trying to make sure I back, back here. I mean, walking around trying to turn on circuits. There's only half the lights came back on.
Looks like you're sitting in the dark, Joel.
I am. I try to, the lights out and the next room over is on.
I'm looking at blue sky here in Dover amongst the dark clouds.
Gosh. Oil lamp, I'm trying to.
You see an oil lamp, Donna?
Yeah, I live out in the country, out in the past, so I'm used to this, but yeah, I'm not reading.
Yeah, I have my, uh, my, my little emergency candle sitting on the desk. So if I had to go onto the phone off the computer, I'm ready. I decided I wasn't going to go out and set up my generator.
Is Donna going to be able to hang in here for a minute or not? Bobby's going to reach up and see if she can't get him.
I, I, I'm on a hair red.
So what we get Ron, we're going to end up not having a quorum anyways then, correct?
Right.
Feels that way.
Yeah.
All right. Well, if that's the case, then I guess unfortunately we'll, uh, we'll have to adjourn and, and continue on the 18th.
Okay, make, make a complete motion and a roll call.
All right.
I mean, you don't have a quorum, I guess.
Right, we'll do the best we've got. I'll make a motion to, um, continue this planning board meeting until August 18th at 6:30.
I second.
Seconded by Jeff Brand. Uh, Jennison, aye. Brand?
Brand, aye.
Masucci?
Aye.
We, we have three votes. Uh, we don't have a quorum, but that's, that will have to do. I apologize to everyone. Thank you for your patience and, um, and again, um, we'll see you in two weeks.
Okay, John and Aaron, I see you guys on the screen there. You understand what happened, right? All right. Okay, so, well, on the 18th, we'll start with the meeting to where we left off. So, you know, you'll be.
Number four.
Yeah, you'll be right after the one that they were working on when they lost the quorum.
So are we not, can I ask a quick question?
Sure. Who's speaking?
This is Erin Kniffer.
Hi, Erin.
Hi. Are we able not to open up our center or move forward without being able to be part of the planning decision? I just, we're trying to open up before school starts. So we're in a conundrum.
Time's crunch.
You. Because we have a childcare center and we have a lot of schools aren't opening and we're trying to be able to help these families and the community. And we're just in a time crunch with licensing with DHHS.
Yeah, you're the Journey Church.
Yes, yeah, we're a childcare center for 158.
Yeah, unfortunately I don't, there's, there's, you know, state regulations permit us from doing anything without a quorum of four or more. So I don't, I, I, you know, unfortunately it's beyond our control to make any decision as a board.
And you do need planning board approval before you open.
Of course. So if I was to keep moving forward and then got that approval, then I would be able to open as soon as I would get that approval.
As long as they approved it on the 18th and if they needed more information and it got continued out, you would have to have a planning board approval for you could open. So the, the board would have to approve the whole thing in order to give approval.
Now, is that something that I'm able to do and get ready and prepare for that meeting? To make sure that I have everything that I need, um, in order to be able to open and move forward?
We, we, we've tried to work with you to make sure you had all your information for the board. But when this board discussed it, if they come up with something.
Sure.
Then that would, you would have to get the information that they come up with in order to get their approval. They could do it as a conditional approval, which is what they did on the other one to, once we received this, then you would have approval. Or they might continue it to another meeting. It depends on how they feel about it and what the issue is.
Okay, great. So there is the possibility of us being able to get an approval based on a condition if there was something that you needed. Um, at a, with a short period of time.
It's a.
Absolutely.
A couple of things that if we were going to have this discussion that you might pay attention to.
Of course.
Is that one.
You can't talk about anything.
We gotta, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta shut this down. Uh, John can talk with them. Or I can talk with them after, but the board as a whole cannot be having a discussion after we've, we've done this.
Jeff, if you could forward that stuff off to Masha that you had, then Masha can have that discussion with them so we can have them ready for the 18th.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any questions? Just throw them away.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, sorry, sorry for the inconvenience.
No, that's fine. We understand.
All right.
You've done a great job so far.
Yeah. All your help.
All right, if there's nothing else, we're gonna, we're gonna shut her down?
Shut her down.
All right, everyone, have a, have a, have a great night.
Take care.
John Kniffer?
Is now exiting. Plus 16036640182. Is now exiting.